Given by Reverend Matt Matthews from the Presbyterian Church. After the invocation, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have a special treat for you tonight. Officer Isabel with the Valdez Police Department will sing our national anthem for us. So after the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'll remain standing, I'd certainly appreciate it. Sir, please stand. And thank you for being here, Pastor.
Let's pray together. Holy God, for those who have served and for those stepping up to serve, we give you thanks. For those in this town who took the time to vote and for those who, for whatever reasons, did not, we give you thanks. For the things this town has accomplished for these citizens and for the things we are about to accomplish, we give you thanks. For our oldest, wisest, longest-standing citizens and for the nurseries and schools filled with our children and youth, we give you thanks. We come to give you thanks and we come to ask your help. Guide our steps as this council welcomes Keith, Shannon, Melinda, and Rexanna. Bring such harmony that they may govern with intelligence, imagination, and love. We ask this and all things in your holy name and the people of God together say, amen.
Amen.
Okay, Council. Going to the agenda, item number five, informational items in your packet. Hopefully you looked over those. And moving on to item six, Oaths of Office administered by Burke County Clerk of Court, Crystal Carpenter. Crystal, thank you again for taking time out of your busy schedule to administer our oaths.
Glad to be here.
It's always been a pleasure. Thank you. We will start tonight with the administration of oath to the new Ward One-elect Shannon Radaboll. She skipped out on us.
Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your eye. Can you see? Can you just repeat after me?
Okay.
I instate your name.
I, Hannah Radaboll.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The office of Councilwoman, Ward One.
The office of Councilwoman, Ward One.
For the town of Valdez.
For the town of Valdez.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Support and maintain.
Support and maintain.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Once the elects are sworn in, they'll come up and take their seats, please. Okay, next up is Melinda Zimmerman, Ward Two-elect, and you're fine, just keep on going.
I instate your name.
I, Melinda Zimmerman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The office of Councilwoman, Ward Two.
The office of Councilwoman, Ward Two.
For the town of Valdez.
For the town of Valdez.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Support and maintain.
Support and maintain.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Melinda's also an excellent cook. She makes a killer of manure cheese. Okay, next up is Council-elect Rexanna Lawman for Ward Three.
Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your eye. I instate your name.
I, Rexanna Lawman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the office.
That I will faithfully execute the office.
Of Councilwoman, Ward Three.
Of Councilwoman, Ward Three.
For the town of Valdez.
For the town of Valdez.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Support and maintain.
Support and maintain.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, the next one I've been looking for for four years. Mayor-elect Mr. Keith Huffman.
I instate your name.
I, Keith Huffman.
Do solemnly swear that.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The office of Mayor.
The office of Mayor.
For the town of Valdez.
For the town of Valdez.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Support and maintain.
Support and maintain.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Where are you going? I didn't say recess.
Nothing's complete until the paperwork is done, so be with me here. Please be seated. Okay. At this time, Council, I would like to request a short 10-minute recess. Have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. We're in a recess for 10 minutes.
If you can think and not make thoughts your aim, if you can meet with triumph and disaster, and treat these two imposters just the same, if you can bear to hear the truth about you, spoken and twisted by naves to make a trap for fools, or watch the things you've gave your life to broken and stoop and build them up with worn out tools, if you can make one heap of all your winnings and risk it in one turn of pitch and toss, and lose and start again at your beginnings, and never breathe a word about your loss, if you can force your heart and nerve and sinew to serve your turn long after they're gone, and so hold on when there's nothing in you except the will which says, "Hold on." If you can talk with crowds and keep your virtue, or walk with kings, nor lose the common touch, if neither foes nor loving friends can hurt you, if friends can count with you but none too much, if you can fill the unforgiving minute with sixty seconds' worth of distance run, yours is the earth and everything that's in it, and what is more, you'll be a man, my son. God bless you, Jim Jackman. Godspeed, good and faithful servant. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean Marie Cole.
It's nice to see Andy to set this mic for me, so I don't have to do it. My name is Jean Marie Cole. I live at 705 Vernon Street in Valdez.
Thank you.
And tonight, as we begin a new year with a new town council, I want to say that again, citizens hope for true transparency and wise decision making, which also takes us into consideration of citizens' input and out input, or else don't send the surveys out. For example, transparency, the item of local food service ordinance, for months this has been on the calendar or on the agenda, and every night that it's really up, it's updated this way. Plane Guard is working on it, and when they have finished it, they will present it to the council for their approval. But what about our local market? When are, who are going to be affected by this, or maybe the patrons who patronize their buildings? How does this support them? Where do they ever get a say in that? A document and a council packet that no one else has seen except the planning board doesn't seem very transparent, because it never needs to be discussed. It just needs to be voted. A high survey priority was facilities for our police and our firemen, but month after month, it just gets kicked down the key, down the road, just by saying, "Let's do some more research. We need to get more research before we can make a decision." Last suggestion was to waste part of the money we have tearing apart our town hall, even though we've been told it's not a good option by experts in the field, but why not? Let's investigate that again. Failure to take an action is also making a decision. So let's let people know what the plans are, how those plans are progressing, and when our firemen and policemen can see some hope at the end of their tunnel. Last example was the pool. Everything was set for a permanent structure. Surveys indicated that's what the most citizens wanted. Then surprise, not on the agenda, a presentation to switch back to the level and cancel the contract for the permanent structure. So now continues to be torn up and unable to be used at all. Last winter, we were at least able, weather permitting, to hop in the pool if we wanted to wear our warm clothing. Not this year. We were told it would be done by October, so no swimming this winter. At last winter, there were those few days that we did get to get in the water. Now it's too torn up to get in the water. It has been over three months, and those of us who have health issues are paying the price of not being able to use water therapy. Seriously, the weather will not make it possible if we don't pour concrete very soon, because it will be too cold. And so now, I think we're not talking about January. I think we're talking about March. I say, please, listen to the citizens, keep us in the loop, get some sound advice, and take the needed actions to move the town forward. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. We'll move on to item number nine, consent agenda. Under item nine, consent agenda, are there any items the council wishes to remove? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
We have a second accepting the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed saying the same. I see none. Motion carries. Item number ten, new business, 10A, proclamation for Burke County North Carolina Nonprofit Day. Right now, I'd like to recognize Burke County United Way member Sheri Watts to come forward.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting us here. I'm Sheri Watts, longtime resident of Valdez, and this is Roberta.
Etzcorn.
Etzcorn. I have a hard time with her name. Another member of the United Way. And what we want to tell you about tonight is One Burke Gives, which is coming up on December 2nd, which is a week from tomorrow. And nationally, the second Tuesday of December is considered Giving Tuesday. We call it One Burke Gives in Burke County. We've been doing this since 2020, and it came about because of COVID. It was just a response, a way for people to contribute to qualified 501(c)(3) charities in the county and do a little fundraising to help people that were in need. That was the first year we had it, and it has grown. It's a 24-hour program. We host it online at onberkgives.org, and it's one with the number one, berkgives.org. Burke County United Way sponsors the online platform that the nonprofits use to fundraise, and traditionally, we have about thirty to forty nonprofits every year that participate in there. Up to this point now, we've got thirty-three that have signed up. We hope to have a few more come along before next week. Traditionally, they've raised more than $75,000. So it's a lot of money to all of our small nonprofits in this community. This is our sixth year. We hope to actually exceed the $75,000 raised, so hopefully we have all of your support in doing that. And we just would like to ask your support to officially proclaim Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025, as this year's One Burke Gives Day.
Thank you. Do we have something to read? Oh, I'm sorry. I did power mine up. I'm learning. I'm learning. Oh, boy. All right. So proclamation, Burke County Nonprofit, North Carolina Nonprofit Day. Whereas charitable nonprofit organizations throughout Burke County save taxpayers thousands of dollars through their services and contribute significantly to the high quality of life for all citizens. And whereas these organizations are committed to serving the educational, cultural, civic, health, religious, human, and animal services, recreational philanthropic? That's about full. Environmental and other diverse needs of Burke County, and whereas the staff and volunteers of all Burke County nonprofit organizations are dedicated to the upholding the highest standards of community service, donating their time and effort to making the difference in all of their lives and of others. And whereas Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025, observance of Burke County, North Carolina Nonprofit Day provides a unique opportunity for the citizens of Burke County to join in appreciation and support of the many contributions made by nonprofit organizations to our continued well-being while boasting awareness for continued growth. Now, therefore, I, Keith Huffman, Mayor of the Town of Valdez, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025, as Burke County, North Carolina Nonprofit Day, and encourage all citizens to recognize the positive impact nonprofit organizations have on the quality of life of the citizens of Burke County. And we thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda, 10B, selection of mayor pro temp. I will right now accept a motion to nominate a mayor pro temp at this time.
I'd like to make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a second? Yes, sir.
You make the motion. We need a name.
Good point.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Rex Anna Lohman for mayor pro temp. Rex Anna Lohman had one of the most electoral votes for this election. She also has served on council for the last four years, and she will serve on council for the next four years.
Is there a second?
I'll second again.
You'll second again. Super. We have a second on accepting the nomination of Councilwoman Rex Anna Lohman as mayor pro temp. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Councilwoman Rex Anna Lohman as mayor pro temp. All right. Next, committee assignments. We have several committee assignments I want to address. I believe we can accomplish this in one vote. So let me go down the list here of the ones that we need to make changes to now. On the BDI, that will move from previous Mayor Watts to myself, Keith Huffman. Western Piedmont Council of Governments, that will move from previous Mayor Watts to Keith Huffman, current mayor. The Western Piedmont Council of Government, MPO Representative Transportation, I nominate Councilwoman Melinda Zimmerman to replacing departing Councilman Glenn Harvey. Parks and Rec Commission, I nominate Councilwoman Shannon Radabaugh to replace Councilman Gary Ogle. And last, Animal Control Appellate Board, from previous Mayor Watts to Keith Huffman, current mayor. I entertain a motion to accept these committee assignments.
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second? All right, super. We have a second on accepting the nominees for committee assignments. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Next on the list, item 10C, approval resolution adopting the 2026 town council meeting schedule. Council, what is your pleasure in approving the resolution adopting the council schedule for next year? There are two options presented to you. One will have twenty-two meetings. Option one is twenty-two meetings. The other option is option two with eleven meetings.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to approve option two of the 2026 calendar in the agenda packet, and with the expectation that the full agenda packet will be made available to council the week before the meeting, the Monday, the week before.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
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 Any discussion?
Again, just on the last part, it will be available, the agenda packet. It is contingent on it being available the week before, so citizens can look over the packet. And also with this discussion, I would like to say that there is a way that citizens who are curious about what is happening. First of all, our town manager, Todd Herms, is an open book. You can call him here at the office, and he will fill you in on anything that is in that packet. He's been great with the council, letting us know more details on things. Also, there is a list that Ms. Jessica has that you can sign up for that is a Sunshine List that you get an email. Currently, we only have 32 people in our town signed up for this list. It is a list that you can go to. She will send you an email, letting you know, here's the packet. It's out there for you. Gives you a little bit more detail, a little bit, you know, if you're wondering when it's going out, it goes out. Any information that she gets, it's part of that list. Anything that goes out to the Sunshine List, goes out to you. But it's kind of sad that we don't have more information about that. We only have 32 people signed up. And I would like to possibly look into maybe the staff seeing if we could do like we do for the alert system for the town, having it where people can go on our website and sign up for that, so it's a little more transparent where they can find that. Because some people, when they move here, you don't know who to ask. They wouldn't know it was Jessica. But the alert system's great that we have, so I think it might be good to have that for our agenda also.
Good point. Good point. Any others? I will add, is it possible we could add it to the newsletter to further stipulate what she's included, that, you know, there's the opportunity to add their names to the Sunshine List?
She's saying yes.
Yes. That's all we need to hear. All right. All right. Well, seeing none, all in favor by signify raising your right hand saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same?
No.
Motion carries. Order one. Item 11 on the agenda. I think this is Mr. Herms' chance to speak.
Yes. So we got a busy month ahead of us. We have numerous events that are scheduled for during the holiday season. There's too many on the list, really. So if you are interested in them, please review the calendar on our website. And you can follow us on many social media platforms and get updates on those things. Town offices will be closed November 27th, 28th, Thursday and Friday this week for observation of Thanksgiving holiday. The next agenda review will be, excuse me, next special call meeting, quadja judicial public hearing, special use permit for the Pottenberg property will be Monday, December 8th at 5:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. And then the next regularly scheduled council meeting will be Monday, December 8th at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
So there will be no agenda review committee meeting on the first. Is that correct? Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. Okay. Item number 12, Mayor Council Comments. Council, issue opportunity to close out. Start to my right if anyone wants. Heather?
I'm actually pulling this up.
And I apologize. Councilwoman.
So to add along to what was said earlier about Jim Jackman, he is actually the one who introduced me to the Waldensian heritage. He taught me a lot. I was looking for volunteer opportunities, because I should be a professional volunteer. If it paid more, I would. But I stepped up to work at the Trail of Faith, because it was so close to my home, and I absolutely fell in love with the history, and kind of made me fall in love a little more with Valdez. And that was when I first moved here 20-some years ago. But I just wanted to let everybody know his funeral arrangements. It's going to be Saturday from 12 noon until 2:00 at the East Valdez Baptist Church. The funeral service will begin at 2 o'clock Saturday on November 29th, is what I've been sent. The burial will follow the service at Abernathy Memorial United Methodist Church Cemetery in Rutherford College, if anyone would like to attend that. Jim was quite a, he was quite a character, and he was definitely someone who loved Jesus with all of his heart. And if I've ever seen somebody who wanted to get bibles to people, he was definitely, he was with the Gideons, and he did a phenomenal job spreading the love of God to his community. And he did a lot for Valdez, and I greatly appreciate his work. But that's the funeral arrangements. And with that, too, welcome to the council, newcomers. You did a great job tonight, by the way.
I hope so.
You did. I didn't hear you mess up the oath or anything. You did good. But I look forward to working with you guys.
Absolutely. Thank you. Councilwoman Ogle. Mayor Pro Tem.
Once again, welcome to my new comrades up here, Keith and Shannon, and working with Melinda and Gary and Heather again. I look forward to that. Also, once again, even though he's gone, congratulations to Charlie Watts and the Order of the Longleaf Pine. That is such an honor, and nobody deserves it more than Charlie Watts.
Councilwoman Zimmerman.
Thank you. I'd just like to say I'm glad to be back up here, working with everybody. I look forward to our time together. I was going to put one plug in for the Christmas Parade on December 6th. Our grand marshal will be Ms. Emma Draun, and I think that's an honor, and I just wanted to recognize her.
Councilwoman Rataba.
I have a few things I'd like to say. Thank you, Mayor Huffman, fellow council members, and the citizens of Valdez. I am truly humbled and grateful to have been elected to serve the people of Valdez. This isn't an accomplishment I reach alone. I want to thank my family and their unwavering support, and everyone in the community who believed in me, encouraged me, and took the time to vote. My military background taught me the value of service, commitment, and integrity, and those are the values I will bring to this council. My faith guides me daily, and I'm thankful for the strength and clarity it provides as I step into this responsibility. I love this town, and I believe deeply in the power of the community involvement. When we show up, work together, and support one another, there is no limit to what Valdez can accomplish. Moving forward, my goal is to listen, truly listen, to the people of Valdez. I'd like to be their, I'd like to be their voice after listening to their thoughts and their ideas, working together with fellow council members to strengthen our community, support our first responders, our youth, and ensure Valdez continues to be the safe and thriving town for years to come while preserving its small-town values. I'm honored to serve and eager to get to work for the families, our neighborhoods, and our future. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a few comments to make, if you would bear with me. I want to express my gratitude to the citizens of Valdez for voting me as your mayor. I will do my best. You should expect nothing less. As to this council who sit before you, they represent not only their individual wards, but all of Valdez. Be proud of these men and women who were called to serve, and please extend the courtesy and respect befitting of them and their positions of trust that they hold. For Valdez to move forward, we need this council and its citizens working together to identify and solve issues of today that will make this town a better place well into the future. We need to get back on track. We must do better. We can do better. And we will do better. Thank you. At this time, I will entertain council to have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
So moved. Second? Second. Adjourned. Thank you.